All right, while that loads, I will give an introduction from here, if that is okay, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sam Bleemer, for those of you who don't know me or haven't seen me in a while. I am the Energy and Conservation Specialist for Will County, and today I want to bring to this committee of the whole a discussion of the Greenest Region Compact. This is the document you all should have in front of you. If you don't have one, I believe that Beth was making her way around with them. And the Greenest Region Compact, really, in a nutshell, is not a complex document, although you may open it and say it's sick and there's a lot going on in here. It really is a sustainability toolkit to help public sector entities work through their sustainability goal-setting and goal-tracking. Now, it was created by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. I know, I am interested in the PowerPoint to put up here. Thank you so much. And this goal-tracking toolkit, really, it puts together the research of several of the municipalities and counties and townships and our different units of government throughout our region and says, "These were the different components that we found in these sustainability plans that were prioritized across all of our communities." And it took all of those priorities and put it together into a toolkit for different units of government to use, instead of having to start from scratch, do all of that research on your own, or hire out, and spend taxpayer dollars on research that's already been done. Thank you for your presentation. Okay. So, the reason I'm bringing it to you today is because I would like to bring it to your attention for consideration for Will County to adopt this document. That basically means that we agree that we have similar priorities as to what is in this document. It doesn't mean that we support and adhere to every goal in this document. It's a starting point. And as we've continuously talked about updating our energy and conservation plan, and what exactly should be included in that, and how things are different from our first energy and conservation plan in 2012, this document really speaks to the expansion of work that this body has done in the area of sustainability, or in areas that relate to sustainability in some way, shape, or form. And I think that this is really representative of that and can help us goal-track from 2012, see what we've accomplished, and be our foundation for our new energy and conservation plan, or whatever name that may take on. So, I'm just going to overview how it was built, so you have some schema as to the research behind it, and then I'm going to go over what is in the Greenest Region Compact, and the impact on Will County. I think it'll be very interesting to see just how many of our communities have adopted this. Nearly 50% have of our municipalities in Will County boundaries, and over 116 municipalities in the Chicagoland region have adopted it. So, the goal of the Greenest Region Compact is to align environmental issues, resources, and actions at the local, regional, and national levels to guide municipalities or public entities, as this has grown to be, to achieve greater environmental sustainability. I think it is a very blanketed goal, something that we all have in common across our region, which is why so many folks have found interest in its value. So, when building the GRC, unfortunately, Edith Macra, who is the Environmental Chair for the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, could not be with us today. She had another engagement. She sends her regrets that she couldn't be here, but her and her awesome team said, "Why reinvent the wheel? Let's see what everyone's doing in the region, and what programs are active and going in the region, and then let's create an inventory of that." So, when they created an inventory of the different community achievements in the Greater Chicagoland area, this is a breakdown of the pie of the different areas of air, climate change, energy, land, sustainability, stewardship, waste, and water. This was the initial categories that they just took from what was out there. They didn't say, "We're going to look for these categories." They just looked based on what was out there, and these were the categories that folks had in their different sustainability plans. And there was a lot of great focus on energy, land, and waste, but some of the other areas were more sparse in their commonality across the different sustainability plans and goal tracking. And they found that about 10% of our communities in all of the areas that were studied for this plan are doing a lot, or are elitist in working in sustainability. They really have just gone above and beyond. And that number isn't terribly impressive to me, because we want to have great impact. We want to do as much as we can on a broad spectrum for our residents. It's great that we have 10% of folks in the Chicagoland area who have gone above and beyond to this level that most folks aren't working on, but what's really impressive is to see that 71% were working at a medium or lower level on sustainability issues, which means 80% of our communities, more than 80%, are working in some way on sustainability, which is really great to see that we have this commonality. And it's hard to see up here, but when you look in your packet of the Greenest Region Compact that was given to you, you can see those bars are representative of the different categories that made themselves apparent during the research process. So, they analyzed, this is a breakdown, the 30 local plans, nine regional and national plans, and 1,149 specific sustainability goals. So, when we say it's comprehensive, it's really not pointed at one particular region. They tried to be as inclusive as possible, so that more people could find value in adopting the GRC. And again, I know this is difficult for you to see, but all of these are different communities whose different goals and planning documents were part of the GRC, have been implemented in some way, shape, or form into the GRC. And you can see, there's a large chunk here from Will County communities. So, when looking at the different amount of effort put into the different areas, it's quite inequitable. Different areas have different focus, and that's going to be true, because we have different residents, different geographies, different social characteristics that are going to lend themselves to different priorities. But in order to put it all together, Edith attempted to work to create a more equitable document that helps all of these communities be able to look at what areas are our biggest focus, and how can we take those and leverage them up and actually be doing something? Because a lot of folks don't have, or have one staff person dedicated to sustainability-related efforts. And so, this document saves hundreds of hours of research. In order to give the most comprehensive and really actionable, we can do this sustainability plan, not just a coffee cup holder or dust collector, something that's actually used, and I'll show you how that works. So, these were the 10 consensus sustainability goal categories that are included in the GRC. And you'll see in your packet, there's a further breakdown with additional detail in each of those 10 areas. And the Greenest Region Compact, this is a brief explanation. It's on the beginning of your packet. I won't read any of this to you. It's just so you can see what's included and get an idea of where you may want to look further if you have questions or wish to gather additional information. And it breaks down what's included in each of those different 10 categories. This is an example of what one of the resolutions can look like. I have a draft one that was sent to me by Edith. She sends it to everyone who's going to be giving an informational presentation on the Greenest Region Compact, and that's something that I can share with you all if you wish to see what it looks like from a resolution standpoint, what exactly are you resolving about the GRC? And really, it's saying, "We're going to adopt it. We're going to have discussion about what's in it, and we're going to do our best to encourage our team here at Will County, our greater Will County team, to work on their sustainability efforts." In a nutshell, that's what the resolution states. So, this is a map, 116 municipalities, I actually think it's 118 now, that have adopted the Greenest Region Compact all across the Chicagoland region, and then there's 10 COGS. We call them COGS, essentially, it's coalitions of governments, and the Will County Governmental League is one that has endorsed this particular document. So, another organization that we've had a long-term and strong partnership with that sees the value in the Greenest Region Compact. And you can see the other COGS that have endorsed the GRC. Over 5.8 million residents are now affected by what value this brings. That's a comprehensive total of all the adopting municipalities and units of government. So, this, again, breakdown of objectives and strategies. The framework is a framework. I think it's important to stress that. It's not saying, "We are adopting this as our sustainability plan." We can use it as a framework to write our sustainability plan, and that's really my wish for your consideration of this document. We're not required to report anything to the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, of course. If we do some type of goal-tracking, we share it with them. They greatly appreciate that. However, we're under no obligation to say, "Okay, every six months, we must submit what we've done in the Greenest Region Compact." So, this is an example of one of the pages that you'll see in the Greenest Region Compact. And this also comes in an Excel spreadsheet form, which is why it looks kind of interesting on paper, but it's really so, for those of you who like to see things in print and check things off and doodle on them and use it as a tool, you can do so. So, you can see the objectives are the items that are bolded, and then the items with an arrow or a greater-than sign, those are your strategies of how to achieve those specific objectives. And then, it's not listed on this page, so you can actually see what's on the top portion, but on the bottom, you have advanced strategies. So, maybe in a particular area, you're very strong, and you want to keep moving in that direction. What's an advanced direction we can take? Or, maybe you're just getting started and considering some objectives under these certain categories. So, that's how it's broken down. The larger goal, right here, lead by demonstrating sustainable values and practices, I believe this is the Sustainable Communities page, or Municipal Operations page. These are the objectives and strategies, and then this is where you track where you're at in these different strategies, objectives, goals. And it says, you know, maybe we've already done this. Maybe we're working on it. Maybe it doesn't apply to us. Some of these are not going to apply to us. Maybe we don't want to work on it right now. We're going to say, "We'll redress this at a later time." So, it helps track where you're at as well, all in one neat, tidy document. So, supported programs, Soul Smart. The Soul Smart effort that was all over our region, though we were a first mover and proud to be, the Greenest Region Compact brought together folks who had adopted it and created a Soul Smart cohort, and helped those communities in a large group achieve Soul Smart designation. So, those are the types of benefits that are reaped from adopting the GRC. You also see AmeriCorps. There is different AmeriCorps volunteers that are working in different parts of the region for folks who have adopted the Greenest Region Compact, to help them actually achieve their goals and strategies, and oftentimes, it's at little or no cost to the county or the municipality. It's a voluntary program. And then, there's other collaborative programs, the VW Mitigation Funding. That's something that the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus advocates on behalf of the GRC adopters. So, again, it just gives us an into some of the opportunities for funding and technical assistance that it's difficult to have your eyes in all places, no matter how hard you try. And so, we have people who are already involved in these organizations, looking out on our behalf and letting us know, "Here's an opportunity. If this is something that fits with one of the strategies you, as a county, have agreed is a priority for you, this is what you can do." So, again, I won't go, you all will have time to look through this on your own. I know that, and I know you don't want me to read all of this to you, but this, again, is just another look at the energy section of the plan, in my biased opinion. I don't know how this ended up on the presentation. But, "Adopt codes and permitting practices that support renewable energy systems in the community." So, that's something we could say, "Yes, we've already done that. In six months, we want to take a review and see if anything's changed, where we need to take a look at those again, and maybe update them to meet the needs of the changing environment." Then, we have a larger objective at the bottom, "And act policies that support clean energy, facilitate the adoption of renewable energy technologies by adapting building and zoning codes." So, again, we've done some of that. This looks at, on a larger scale, not just talking our Soul Smart experience, but again, how we're doing the solar study with Strand Associates right now. That would fall under this objective. So, much of it, we may be doing already, and much of it, we may look at it and say, "Oh, you know, we weren't thinking that we could take advantage of that. Let's discuss how it fits into our long-range or short-range planning." And again, the Soul Smart cohort gets brought up there. This is a look at the cohort, was 20 municipalities. This, again, is just an outcome of what adopting the GRC and just getting access to that network can do for a community. At the time, this was the largest cohort in the country for solar, so it really is great for press, it's great for education, it's great for communicating across peers when we're all facing a common, not issue, but a new topic, like solar was for us. Those are some of the Greenest Region volunteers who are working across the region. We do have one that has been assisting Will County in some of our efforts, and that has been at no cost to us. So, again, a great benefit in that. I'm just going to skip through, because some of these are repetitive. This is a look at the Will County GRC communities, so 18 communities. These folks have all adopted the GRC, and those different COGS, the South Suburban Mayors and Managers, Southwest Conference of Mayors, Will County Governmental League, are all supporting coalitions of government. So, 47% of our municipalities have adopted the Greenest Region Compact and said, "Yes, we think this is the framework that we should be working from," and that number's growing. We have several more that are currently considering this document. GRC branding, we also get access to the branding. Again, there's value in that from a marketing perspective. The GRC has gotten a lot of national attention and awards, so to say you're part of that coalition has benefit just in that brand. Outcomes of the collaborations against Soul Smart Greenest Region, AmeriCorps volunteers. It also gives access to things like purchasing pools, so for community solar off-taking, these communities have joined a co-op where they'll get access, and Edith will work with her team to coordinate for them, to purchasing power from some of the local community solar projects. So, that's an example of another benefit, benefit after benefit. And Schmeck, South Metropolitan Higher Education Consortium, is one of the organizations that has the AmeriCorps member. I like to give them a shout-out, because they've allowed their AmeriCorps member to spend time on some Will County-supported initiatives. Was that fast? Was that good? So, our Edith Macra, she's awesome. If you have any specific technical questions about the research, she's definitely going to be a better resource than I could be. If you have Will County-specific questions, you know I'm always available to you all.
I have a question.
Yes.
This does not have anything to do with smart cities, correct?
No. Not to my knowledge. I've never heard it affiliated, but I can confirm that for you.
Yeah, because if it does, I want nothing to do with it.
Okay. I've never heard the two affiliated, so, again, not at all to my knowledge, but I'll confirm that for you, so you have, for sure.
And then, you know, we haven't seen any numbers, but, you know, we really, when we go into this stuff, we really need to see cost.
There is no cost.
No, there's a cost affiliated with what we do. It's not free.
Sure. So, let me just make sure I'm understanding correctly. This is a frame-
Like we were doing solar, and if we do solar on a building, it costs us money to put solar on a building.
Oh, yes, yes.
All right? Well, the cost is higher than what we're going to gain, then it's a bad idea.
Correct.
Well, in the case of solar, it's a good idea for us, so I say, "Fine." But I don't want to see the county going out and spending a bunch of money on projects that really are a waste of our taxpayer dollars, just to be called green. So, I really want to, you know, when we talk about this in the future, I want to see dollar amounts, how much it costs, and how much is projected that we can save.
Sure. Very good point, County Board Member Balich. I would never, in my person, recommend to this county board anything that would not be a good value for taxpayer dollars. Absolutely not. I would just not ask for you all to consider that. I wouldn't be able to feel good about it as a representative of the county, or as a person. This is really for us to build upon. It gives us a framework to start and do this, write this new sustainability plan.
You know how I felt about the solar, solar stuff?
Absolutely.
After I realized it was a savings, I was in favor. So, I'm not hardcore, no way.
Sure.
I just want to make sure that the county is not going to spend money for something that's really not going to go of gain, just so that we can say, "We're part of this Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus." Because I don't like the idea of the mayor's caucuses, because most of those mayor caucuses have a lot to do with Cook County in Chicago, and Cook County in Chicago want to come in here and steal our resources and assets. They're just predators. And whenever I see something like that, I think something's up. So, you know, seeing metropolitan mayors, some people look at it, and that's pretty cool. I look at it different. They're coming in after our stuff, and we have to protect ourselves constantly.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Point made. Mike?
Yeah, Sam, you know, there's nobody greener than me here. But I do want to ask some questions, and I have some concerns. Much like Steve says about the mayors, I mean, that group is the one that wants to take, you know, 20,000 acres out of Peatone area for airport, which would be a pollutant. So, they're not, they're always on more of an economic track than they are a green track, which concerns me. Secondly, how many counties have signed on?
Kane County adopted this document last month.
Okay. No other counties?
No other counties, because it was originally written for municipalities and then additional units of government. The original GRC, I should say. There's a GRC, Greenest Region Compact, and then the Greenest Region Compact 2. We don't talk about the Greenest Region Compact, because no one's using it anymore. It's the Greenest Region Compact 2, which was updated once townships and counties and other units of government were finding interest in it, because we had to make it more comprehensive, or I should say, they have to make it more comprehensive to appeal to those folks. Now, I just would like to provide a clarification, if I may. The Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus did the research to assemble this document. By adopting the document, it does not make you a member of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus.
Right.
It does not say you subscribe to their values and principles. It also does not marry you to any of the objectives in here. It's a tool to go through and say, "Which objectives work for us? How can we use this based on the research that's already been done to write a sustainability plan that works for us, that we find value in?"
Well, my, and there's a lot of good things in here. My concern is, is if we adopt this, I don't want it to be a document that everybody refers to and says, "We have to do that because, and it's only going to cost us a million dollars, but it's in our plan here that we have to do it." That's the big concern. I'm hearing what Steve's saying, but I understand it on a case-by-case basis. As we looked at solar, we saw there was an ROI. It makes sense, it's good practice. All of those things have to come into play. But there are things in here that are county, counter-county, unincorporated areas, that, you know, the idea of some people living in unincorporated areas gives them more leeway to do things, and that's why they want to be in an unincorporated area. If they wanted more rules and regulations, they would go to a municipality or next to a municipality and buy by their laws. So, I think we have to watch, because there's so many things in here, to look at all of them, so that somebody can stand up and say, "Well, we have to do this now, because it's part of this plan, and you all voted for this plan, so we've got to stop leaf-burning everywhere," which we know is a bugaboo, and that happens to be in here. So, I really think we have to watch in that regard. We can, if we vote on this as a guideline for things to look at, to check the boxes, but not as a guideline for what we need to do exactly in the future, because then we're not assessing things on an individual basis. And there's some things in there that are going to be crazy costly, that may not benefit us. You don't want to do it just to check the box, so-
Absolutely. And that, in this document, I'm really glad you made those points, County Board Member Frisland, because it is not meant to be, "We must do everything in here to check the box." It's meant to be, "What aligns with our goals and values? Let's work on those. What's going to bring value? Let's work on those." It's a framework, because it's a starting point. It's by no means the final product, and the concerns that have been expressed have been expressed by many communities who have ended up adopting this document. And it's really, if Edith was here, she could tell you, some folks don't look at, use it as a framework for any certain part. Let's say, they don't have a public works department. We're not going to look at this particular portion. It doesn't apply to us. It's not in alignment with what we hope to achieve right now, so they just don't pay attention to it.
So, if it is adopted, I know you said it's a framework, but who's decided on that, what projects or what initiatives or goals are going to be adopted?
So, what my hope is, is to use this to create the basis and the foundation for an updated sustainability plan, and then that sustainability plan would be brought to you all to consider for approval. So, it's really the starting point.
If you're not joining, you can call the staff.
Sorry, I've been waiting for a long time. So, I asked Edith for a resolution, and I did edit it for Will County, and I asked Madam Speaker to add it to the county board with Sam's support, because of all the work that she's done on sustainability. To answer Net's question, it would be us, the county board. We drive the policymaking of the county. At the end of the day, it is in our control. So, to Steve's point, to Mike's point, it is absolutely what we decide to spend our energy on and our tax out. Now, Sam and Land Use Department and the Forest Preserve can all recommend things that make sense within their wheelhouse. I've spoke with, you know, their departments. I've spoke with Ralph at the Forest Preserve, and there are several things we're already doing, that we're already supporting in this document. So, to me, it's a little bit of a no-brainer. To Mike, your point about, you know, we don't want to say we have to do this, I agree. And there are absolutely things in here that do not reflect what we do at the county level. And so, if you return to any page, you'll see that column L says, "Not relevant." So, the idea is, like when I spoke with Ralph at the Forest Preserve, that they would go through this and itemize, what are they already doing, what are they not doing, what's feasible, what could be in a future plan? I'm sure Sam and her departments would do the same thing. And then, at that point, they can bring forward additional plan. Like she said, this is a framework, not a Bible.
That's my point, Rachel. We could, Sam could, Ralph could, just look at this book rather than joining.
Right. So, we're not joining-
Here's, rather than adopting the GRC, creating a sustainable plan-
Well, okay, I guess, there's, other than the benefits that Sam has already pointed out, we are, and to confirm that Sam had already said, that we're not joining the Mayor's Caucus. That is not what this is. The resolution says that we're adopting this as a framework. So, then, this gives us a tool to then move forward. It also sends a message that we do care about, you know, our land use and our mobility and our leadership in the area, and our water, which are things we're already doing. There's no downside to this. No one's going to hold us accountable. We, at the end of the day, make those decisions.
Thanks. Thank you, Rachel, for your comment. Laurie, do you have a-
Tim.
Tim?
Yeah, Sam, thank you for what you've done as far as sustainability up to this point. Appreciate your efforts, especially on the solar side, and so how active you were on that.
Thank you.
I always get a little nervous when I look at this, so maybe you can soothe my nerves. But you've mentioned quite a few times that this isn't about reporting. We don't have to report, and as far as accountability to the GRC 2 organization or whatever. But I'm looking at this, the objectives and strategy pages and everything, and I'm going down it, and I'm looking at all the checkboxes, and, you know, I'm going through goals and reducing sprawl and development and park master plans. This thing oozes reporting. This, I mean, and for us to turn around as a county government, to Mike's point, I feel that, that one of the ways that we do, and want to apply ourselves as, you know, elected officials, is to be able to keep this structure out of what we're doing, and to rely independently on ourselves as a county to make these decisions. And in government, a lot of things always start out as a great plan and a checklist, and then there's accountability, and then it's used as a ruler to beat municipalities over the head with. So, I get a little nervous. I'm just telling you where I'm coming from with it. I think we can do a lot of these things internally. If you want to look at some of this and use it as a guidepost, that would be great. As far as a commitment to this organization, not so much. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your feedback, County Board Member Crellitis. I just want to mention that the checkbox and the reporting aspect and just nature of it in general is really for self-reporting, to make it easier to, you know, it's not, sometimes when you're looking at a plan, you're like, "Wait, did we do this? Where are we at with this?" It's just to make it easier in that aspect, but I thank you and respect your feedback.
Okay. Judy, do you have a comment?
I do. So, Sam and I have talked a bunch of times on sustainability and things like that, and she knows that I am totally into that type of thing with the environment. And being here in Will County, we are in an area that could become lost. It could become a DuPage County, where years ago, when my grandmother first moved there, was a lot of open space, and now it's just built up so much, as well as other counties, you know, Cook County and things like that. So, I would really like our county to look at what we have here and how lucky we are to have what we have. We have a lot of major roads. Granted, they need to be improved, but we do have them. In addition to that, we have a lot of open space from our forest preserves, and we've put in a lot of practices through the forest preserves with our conservation practices on the farmland, that's property that we haven't yet developed into a forest preserve. That's a big improvement that we've done. And so, we need to look at that, because we are at the point where we could have a lot of influx as to more and more buildings, more and more concrete, things like that. of influx as to more and more buildings, more and more concrete, things like that. And I think it'd be good for us to look and say, listen, how much do we want to build out? What is, what is the real goal of us in Will County as legislative leaders to, what do our constituents want? And maybe putting a land use plan in place where we say, you know, we're going to look at trying to do some farmland preservation, things like that, that we maybe didn't do. We've talked about it for a while here, you can do easement purchases, Kane County has done that, I'm sure you're aware, and I've worked with Jill from out there, but, I mean, Janice Hill, rather, from out there, but that's something that I think is a really good thing for us to look at, because otherwise, if we don't take the time to look at it now and we continue ongoing, we'll just keep building and building and building, another intermodal, another intermodal. And then, then we'll all be at the point where it's too late before, for us to make a decision. So I think it's good, and I also know that a lot of the local farmers out by me, little small ones, are looking at doing sustainable farming to create different, growing different crops for different food sources. So, yeah, I totally think that it's a good idea to look at, and we are, like you said, Rachel, we're the ones that make the decision. And I think, even if we take a small portion and say this is our focus right now, I think that's a benefit to us and our constituents, so.
Thanks, Judy. Meta?
I just want to say, thank you, Rachel, for getting this together, I really appreciate it. You too, Sam. My constituents really do like things like this up in the Aurora area. I also would like to respectfully request that we don't refer to our colleagues in other counties as predators, okay? Thank you for that. I understand, but if you'd like to have that conversation out of an open meeting where you're referring to your colleagues as predators, I would appreciate that.
Well, they are. The South suburban mayors and managers are predators.
Thank you. Julie?
I would also like to say, I feel very strongly what Judy does regarding our agriculture base here. And once it's developed, it's gone. And I think, you know, there really isn't a category specifically about agriculture in this plan, but I think in Will County, I would support encouraging that, supporting that base, the preservation, the value it leads to our county, and what it's teaching our younger generations, and also the production of food. So I think that that's something that I would support very much. Development, fast forward 20 years, and development can create, we all know, a lot of problems. And we are not experiencing a 100-year flood, I believe, at this point in time. However, the flooding in the northern part of Will County is still at record levels and has not subsided like it typically does. So to me, you know, looking forward decades in the future, these are, these are the things that happen with overdevelopment. So I'm very much supportive of preserving that agricultural parcel, as well as the forest preserve.
Laurie?
Again, Sam, you know how I feel. I don't have to go into a little long, drawn-out speech. Good job. And thank you, Rachel. Thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Mike? Mike?
Yeah, again, let me reiterate, my concern is- This is a framework, but I think we could develop our own framework for this that is, that everybody could agree on now, because I will tell you, and Rachel, we're all together right now, and we're talking framework. We aren't going to be here forever. And the next group that comes in goes, "Hey, they all voted for this, we better start doing all this stuff now." And that's the fear, is when you put something down on paper, there's all these kind of initiatives that could be started. I'd much rather see us, we already know what initiatives we've completed, if we put down on paper some sustainability initiatives that we wanted to look forward to over the next 10 years or whatever, and we focus on those instead of just saying, "You could still have this book and check off, hey, we did that." But once we put this in the record, the next group can say, "Hey, we've got to start doing all these things right now, and they all voted for them, so they must be right." That's my fear.
Amanda?
I think this is a really great framework. I do hear the concern about adopting it outright. However, they did a lot of the work for us here. I really like the idea of our county saying, you know, "We want to protect the environment." And also, having this whole study put together, it really increases transparency with the constituents, so they know what we're aiming at, you know, what are we trying to do? I think a lot of constituents have mentioned to me environmental concerns as I've been out and about, but we don't really have a plan like this. So whether we create one as a county and use this as a framework, or we actually adopt this, I think it would be really helpful as a board to do that for our county.
Stephen?
Yeah, I've been on the board for, probably for the six years I've been here, we had discussions where people came and gave presentations on water and how water's becoming a scarce resource. And the next year, we would get another one, and we'll probably get one this year, but we never did anything. We never came up with a plan, we never, nothing, we just said, "Yeah, it stinks." And then the landfill, that's filling up, and every year we talk about it, every year I say we should start applying to expand the landfill. And I haven't heard anything come forward to expand the landfill. We have the Peatone Airport, that probably is never going to happen, taking prime farmland out of production, and having those poor people that live there be forced to move, and not, you know, we have so many things that we could address as a county board without even going to this plan, that we've talked about numerous times, and nothing has happened, that I know of. Now, Dean, if you're going to tell me we did apply for an expansion of the landfill, I think that's great, if we did, but I haven't heard it yet.
Well, we, there is no need for an expansion yet, but we have-
It takes 25 years to get it through, so how do we know-
Not 25 years, no. No, no, it's not 25 years. We are beginning a process, which you may or may not know about right now, about renegotiating the host agreement. And one of the things was the out-of-county waste, and then allowing, so allowing the towns beyond Will County. So that was one of those things that we have to renegotiate. The other, right, but, but we have, we have capacity to 2036, right now, 2036.
Didn't you guys say-
We do. So, so if we try to, if, well, okay, Steve, if we, if we try to bring a proposal where we don't have, we have a lot of capacity, it could be challenged in that way. So we have to do it at the right time, okay? We have a lot of capacity still.
25 years.
Does not take 25 years. It will take about four or five years to get through that process. When you add legal hurdles and citing and studying and all that, that's about what it would probably take. I can't say exactly the years, but 25 years, if you wanted to do a whole new landfill, you wanted to find another place, you wanted to study that, you wanted to go through that process, it would take longer. And that's what happened the first time, was it did take a while longer. We have a landfill. Expansion is different than finding a brand-new landfill with the whole thing. We're talking about a vertical and possibly a horizontal capacity on the same footprint, same area. So it's different. I just wanted to clarify that. Now, as far as the discussion, we have what's called, and Marta was here during this time, back about 10 years ago, no, it was seven years ago, we adopted, this board adopted what's called the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Plan, okay? A lot of what Sam is doing, a lot of what she has done, has been in compliance with that plan. There are some things we haven't done because they just haven't been able to, we haven't been able to get there. For most of that time, we had a part-time person working on this. Sam has only been full-time for, what, two years? So we are moving heaven and earth right now, as much as we can. But in order to do more and save half a million, million dollars more per year, we would need more time on that. You know what I'm saying? We have to have more people, more time, more whatever. We could save a lot more money. And you'll find out soon that when we are negotiating our agreement, the gas coming out of our landfill is extremely valuable, yes. So you'll just, you'll find that out over time, you will.
Thank you.
Okay, not only is good for the environment to take care of that, okay?
Okay, thank you. We got other people.
So I just want you to know, we are working, we are working on a lot of these issues. I don't want you to think that we're not. Just because we haven't given any reports lately doesn't mean we're not working on it.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Maybe?
No.
Rachel?
Yes, so I really would like this to be a bipartisan issue. I think a lot of things that's in here are things that we are, all of our areas care about. So what I would encourage you guys to do if you have concerns, is to just go through each area and do a self-evaluation yourself. Go down each of the goals and mark "not relevant" or mark, you know, "not interested," or if you believe we're doing them already, and see how much of this we're already doing at the county level. And then, you know, adopting the framework doesn't mean that's what we're doing. Adopting a framework means we do a self-evaluation, we check it off, and like Sam said, we design a sustainability plan going forward, we design, you know, our policies moving forward on what we have here. Which means she would come back to the county board with, you know, a plan that we would then vote on and say, this is where we'd like to go. It would include the stuff on waste. Also, the agriculture, between pages seven and 13, is a very extensive stuff about land protections, and there is a lot of stuff in there about the farming. So I definitely encourage you guys to go through that, because a large part of our county is going to fall into those pages. So I just, you know, I don't want this to be a fight, I want us to find a compromise to move forward, but I don't think we need to start from scratch. There is an excellent document here that we can, you know, pick out the parts that we like, and if we need to be super clear in our plan, Mike, to say, by adopting framework, it is only giving us ideas for goals to create the plan that we then create, then let's add that language to the resolution.
Yeah, we have to be really clear about that.
Yeah, so that's-
That's why so many ones have used that, including constituents to say, you said you were going to cost share with rem buying plants, where's the money in?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Annette?
Just two quick questions. If we adopt this, there's no fee, right?
No.
And then, if we do, if we're part of the GRC Two, would that help in getting grants or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, County Board Member Parker.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just make a general comment, because I would like to say thank you for enlightening me, because I have only been here for two years, as Dean said, and so I really appreciate it when I get to understand what my leadership is looking for and what experiences you all have had, and how that is affecting the way we're looking at these different proposals I bring forward to you all. The reason I came here recommending or giving the option for consideration to adopt the GRC and asking of your time, really is because if we are going to use it, you know, of course, it's available publicly, anyone can access it and use it for what they will. The reason that I mention adoption is because a great deal of research and work went into the document, and out of respect for that and us using it as a resource, adoption is one way to express it, certainly not the only way, I'm sure. But that was my, my logic. Also, in the resolution, it can be stipulated that this is not a reflection of the sustainability goals, but rather the framework from which they were derived. That's another option that we can do, there's lots of flexibility with the resolution. I certainly think that one thing I've learned is that you all are interested in this type of format, however, and that it appeals to your busy lives and having a packet for every county board that's yay thick, and just being able to go through and check and see what's done, and as a method of reporting, it's really easy to check that way. So I appreciate that feedback, and I'm going to work to make sure the next sustainability document has that sort of style. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may just ask for feedback, is currently our 2012 Energy Efficiency and Conservation Plan is very focused on energy. What I'm hearing is that there may be a desire for a more comprehensive plan that includes kind of all the aspects of sustainability that are being worked on, is that a correct perception?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, your presentation. And we'll, I guess, take it under advisement at this time. We have no other new business. Motion adjourned. No public comment, no chairman's report, no executive session. Now, motion to adjourn. Stand a second. All in favor? Aye. We be adjourned.